Anybody want to speak on any item except the letter that the borough received from Lou Hornstein? Anybody on this side of the room? Anybody on this side?
I think Joe wants to talk.
Wanted to present, by the way, my name's Joe Rakowski. I own Noble Earth, 212 Mill Street. Also own the building and live at the property as well. Here to bring about a proposal for possibility of the historic Bristol Borough Farmers Market. Myself along with Elsa and Brad of Lovegroth CSA, which are, they're farmers down at the Snipes Farm in Marsville. Elsa's a native Bristol Borough resident. We'll be working in partnership for this idea. We're looking to possibly have this Farmers Market every Thursday from 5:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. at the Wharf. If we're able to use the space under the canopy, we're looking to bring in no more than 12 vendors. We're looking to start it somewhere between mid to late May, depending upon the crazy weather that we're experiencing. This will last through October, weather pending. Free to the public to participate and be a part. We will be a nonprofit partnering again with myself and Lovegroth CSA. We're looking to carry insurance either under the Bucks County Food Shed Alliance or raising the bar was nice enough to reach their handout as well in participation. We should have an answer on that should this go forward by the end of the week. We will have no prepared foods serving people. We want to bring people to the borough, give them the opportunity to step off the docks from their boats or park down at the parking lot and visit our restaurants and retail shops. I do believe up and down the Delaware River will be the only Farmers Market in town to have a Farmers Market just off of the docks, which will bring in a lot of marketing for the borough. We're asking no money from the borough. We're asking nothing of the borough other than to allow us to move forward with this idea. We will have volunteers. We will be responsible for trash, recycling, composting, anything that the board would like us to do. We will be seeking sponsors to help out with more of the promotion of not only our Farmers Market but Bristol Borough itself. Marketing for the borough as a whole, there's still, we have a number of people inside the borough and outside the borough who fully support this idea. We found a lot of public support on this even today as I posted that I would be coming here tonight. The feedback was tremendous. This will also be something that complements the tram should that go through. Being that we're looking to have this on Thursdays, that's more of a push for people to not only visit the market but to go around the rest of the borough and see that we have to offer now. And that's about it.
So it's Thursday from what time?
5:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. with the exception of loading and loadout.
Well, I think it's something that you should, I mean, I don't know if council has any questions, but come in and just sit down with the manager and really put something together so he can present it to us. I mean, this is the, doing it this way really doesn't work right.
That's fine. I'm totally fine with that.
Rather, I mean, I'm glad you presented it to council, but I think, you know, let him get something in writing, put it in our packets and something maybe we can vote on or see how we're going to move forward with this. Is anybody benefiting through this?
No, we're a nonprofit. We will be charging the vendors a fee just to kind of catch them in on this thing for the number of months that we're doing it. All the monies that we'll be making is going right to the marketing. So that goes along with marketing the borough as well, being that the name would be the historic Bristol Borough Farmers Market.
Will you need to use electricity?
Not currently. It's not in our plans, no.
I'll just say, I don't know how many of you guys are familiar with Joe or his business, but it's a first-class operation and Joe has mentioned this to me before. And, you know, if anybody's going to be able to pull it off, especially with the clientele that comes through his business most particularly, you know, it's a lot of natural herbs and spices and kombucha tea. And it's definitely a group of people that are really interested, I think, in the product as opposed to anything else. And I think after Joe talks to Mr. Dillon, I would be very confident that they would come up with something very good.
And where exactly is it that you want to do this?
We're looking as a first option to have it under the Wharf canopy entering near the docks. So it would really start at that border of just before you enter the path to go up to the dock area and bring that forward a bit. We'll be lucky, I'll be very surprised if we have up to 12 to start. I mean, this is a newer thing, but the sooner we get on it, the more we can hope to have. But that is our first option that we're looking at.
Okay.
So it'll be to have a perimeter just inside the canopy, all lined straight.
Ralph, would it just be limited to food?
No, well, it'll be local growers. We're not going to have any prepared foods because we don't want to compete with the restaurants and other retails and other existing businesses. We want to make sure we're not competing with any of them. So it will be local growers and some local artisans, something in the, you know, we know a few preserve and, you know, beekeepers and stuff, even Silver Lake has some interest, so.
No, I was thinking, you know, you're not going to allow somebody to sell Bristol T-shirts or things like that.
Oh, we could do that. I'm totally fine with supporting it.
I think he's...
Yeah, no, I don't think it's a good thing.
Oh, no, 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 we don't want to compete with any local business.
We're not looking to make it like a bazaar, right?
Right, no. It's a strict Farmers Market. Our goal is organic or local sustainable markets that are small business. That's something I've been heavily, heavily a part of throughout the country. I lived in the Open Day area for a number of years, was heavily involved with that out there and it's knowledge that I brought back here to Bristol. In fact, I also am one of the curators of the Bucks County Healthy Living Fest that we hold every year at Snipes Farm. We've had great success the past five years. So it's something, more knowledge I could bring down here to the borough.
Thursdays, you were bringing in farm fresh?
That's right.
At your place of business on Mill Street too.
Yeah, we have little to no competition with that either. One of the reasons we want to do it on a Thursday is we have other Farmers Markets throughout the tri-state that happen on the weekends. So a lot of those farms are already involved with that. A Thursday would definitely allow us to have more of an open relationship with these farmers and more of an opportunity to bring them down here.
Sounds good.
Anybody else have anything for Joe? Get in touch with the manager and we'll discuss it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Just to recap, because Matt just texted me the room he's in. I'm going to start back from the beginning of the meeting. What I said in the beginning of the meeting was, we're going to try to do this meeting in two parts. We're going to deal with a regular council, whatever anybody has to discuss, the chief, the mayor and the fire chief, public participation. And then we're going to just deal at the end of this meeting with the letter that the borough received from Lou Hornstein, from Dave Gerard and Mr. Rikio. So that's how we're going to handle this meeting. Anybody else on this side of the room want to speak on anything besides the Little Lake thing? Go to the podium and state your name and...
Hello, Megan Hemms, Hemms, Struckin' Auto. Apologies that I don't know how to address the floor. My first borough meeting. I am actually speaking on behalf of the Bristol Borough Business Association here to talk about First Friday, but talk about the first week of May being jam-packed with six different events in 72 hours. How does the association contact the shuttle that is used for the do-up that goes to the Lennox lot? How is that arranged? What do we do?
Well, first of all, the Lennox would have to give you permission to park on their property. So you're going to have to contact somebody at Lennox. I'll try to find out who that person is and...
The same channels that are used for the do-up, getting people down.
And then we...
There's a committee that does.
We deal with the school on the buses. And I think we just pay the bus drivers, they donate the buses. What else? So you got the buses and the parking lot. What else do you need?
That's...
Thirty-two questions?
That'll do, that'll do. Because it's Restaurant Week, there will be a lot of buzz because the Revolution's back in town that first week. It's the first First Friday, the Tall Ships, there's a theater, or yes, there's a show at the theater, and it's the car show that weekend too. So there's a lot in that 72 hours and I feel that there's going to need, or the association feels that...
Everything, everything gets organized through and coordinated through the emergency management coordinator. So you need to deal with Merle on all this stuff and the police chief and fire chief. What Tall Ship is coming in?
Believe the Gazella's coming back?
They're not coming, we don't know about it.
I'm getting, the Tall Ship is...
I don't think there's any ships coming in May.
You haven't set a date yet.
No, it's not even...
That's info I'm getting from the last board meeting from the association.
I don't know where you're, Merle?
We just, we just had a meeting with Shay from the Business Association.
You want to go to the podium, Merle? Are you on this committee?
I am a new board member of the association, yes.
So they sent you here tonight?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Aren't you?
The chief and I and...
Now, you can stay there if you want.
We had, we had scheduled a meeting for Shay to come in for the Business Association and also for the car show, Rich Vallejo. Shay came in and we had a meeting with her. Richie didn't show up. And they were both sent emails for the same event at the same time. So we met with Shay and we went over everything with her for, for the First Fridays and we thought, you know, everything was good. So I don't know, I didn't get anything as far as the buses.
I just got a text from our tax collector, Anna Larissy. She said the Gazella's not coming in May.
Is it possible maybe that they were just talking about what had been done before and it kind of got conflated with some of the other things?
No talk during the public.
Yeah, I'm saying, I'm saying that...
I was going to say, she wanted me to say.
But itself, is it possible that they were just saying like it worked out well before and like maybe there's some other things coming?
The idea was that it was, the idea to ask about this shuttle was because so much was happening.
Right.
All in that same...
I think the best advice I can give you is to meet with your organization and meet with Merle because he knows every event that's taken place and, I mean, for us to do it, it's really, we're...
Hi. Megan.
Megan, I would talk to Merle.
That was a good first time on, you did very well with your other stuff, so you're good. Don't worry about it.
Thanks, Megan.
Thanks, Megan.
Megan, you're just talking about needing the shuttle for this first First Friday or?
No.
Or did you want to do it, are you looking for on a regular basis?
Because there is so much going on the first week, May.
That's this, you're not looking for an ongoing...
Hey, if it gets so big we need that, then that's...
That's a good problem, that'll be a good problem to have.
It's really not...
I've been in contact with the Mirror Wall and they have some dates that they were, that they would like to be in Bristol or if not, they're going to be in Burlington, you know, they're really stationed, their port of call is Burlington, but they really liked the facilities here, so. But I did mention that we weren't quite sure where we were with, with the docks at the time, but if we could accommodate them, but nothing's been, nothing's been etched in stone yet, so. But if it's there, it's like you say, it's another good problem to have.
Right.
But just to clear that up, and that is the Mirror Wall, not the...
And biggest objective for you was to figure out how you can use the buses, right?
Right, right.
So we'll figure out what to do.
Getting everybody up and down the street.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anybody else on this side of the room? Anybody on this side of the room?
Hi, I'm Melissa Zimmerman. I'm the interim managing director over at Bristol Riverside Theater. I'll be very quick. I just wanted to remind our Bristol Borough residents that through the generous funding of the council, we are able to offer $5 tickets for our performances. And we have two wonderful musicals coming up. The Producers, those $5 tickets are available tomorrow and Wednesday, so March 6th and 7th. We also have Triumph of Love, which will be happening as reference, May 1st and 2nd, we'll have our $5 tickets available for residents. So I wanted to make sure that everyone knew about those opportunities and you can feel free to call the box office or come on into the theater to pick up those tickets. You can purchase four at a time for residents at the $5 price. I was at a dress rehearsal on Sunday and I'm very excited about our producers that's coming up starting tomorrow, starting tomorrow night. We'll have our first preview, so we hope to see you all at the theater. And thank you again to the council for your generous support of the theater company. We really couldn't do it without you.
Is there a phone number?
There is a phone number. And I should know it by now. It is in fact, 215-785-0100. So you can call the box office or you can come on and down to us at 120 Radcliffe Street. And we'd be more than happy to take care of you and get you some tickets to see these fantastic performances.
Excellent.
Thank you so much.
Anybody else on this side of the room? And it's public participation on, on that. Harvey, what do you have?
Just two things. We're continuing to work on the CO and smoke detector programs and we'll probably be, depending on the weather forecast, have a crew in the station if it's as predicted right now.
Well, right now they're calling for eight to 16 inches on Wednesday.
So we'll have, for eight to 16 inches, we'll have people in the station.
Any questions for Harvey? Chief?
We're continuing conversations and of course, because of the national attention with the schools and showing a presence there and being engaged with them. The other thing is also you see a press release coming out tonight. For a month-long investigation we just got conducted and concluded, we had a large seizure of marijuana, 26 pounds, $20,000 in cash, seizure of vehicle. Good job by the guys, assisted by the Bucks County detectives. Middletown Township, Falls Township and also Ben Salem and a couple of New Jersey authorities. It's that good cooperative effort that we're getting some of these things taken care of.
And I have questions for the chief?
I do. Chief, how do we address automobiles with expired stickers that are on public streets?
Expired stickers is a secondary offense. They have to be moving at that time. It is not illegal, it's, well, I wouldn't say it's not illegal. It is not an enforceable offense where we can say, okay, you're expired.
Okay.
If they are legally registered, they have to go through the abandoned vehicle statute, which is very complex, which means we have to send a certified letter. First of all, we have to see that it hasn't moved for 48 hours. Then we have to serve a certified letter to that individual. After service was received, the letter then comes back to us and that's when we can take action or remove it. I know there was one councilman Rodriguez's street, I'm sure, I'm surprised I didn't get calls that it was gone. I thought you'd go, great. But it is, it's painstaking, it's a painstaking process. State regulates it very much. It's not like...
Gotcha. That's it, thanks.
Any other questions for the chief? Joe?
No, I don't have anything tonight.
No, thank you. I mean, I'm glad that we're buckling up on that marijuana stuff, especially before springtime gets here. So keep up the good work.
Dave?
Yeah, I heard that Mr. Polinski has resigned his job.
Well, I tell you, we're going to talk about that later. Any other things besides Leo thing?
No.
Tony?
Yeah, I mean, we're done with the chief? This is just...
I asked if you had anything...
I relive the chief. Now we're just talking regular?
Yeah, whatever you have. If you have anything else for the chief, that's fine.
No, 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 I just didn't know if he was asking a question for the chief or he went into what we had going on. The first thing I want to do is announce that the Bristol High School Drama Club is having a play once on this island. There's going to be four shows this weekend, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. Friday, March 9th at 7:00 p.m. Saturday, there are two shows, 2:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m. And Sunday, March the 11th is a 2:00 p.m. show. Tickets are $10, $5 for students and senior citizens. And, you know, I would like to see everybody go out there and support that. The next thing I had is on the Treasury report, I just had a couple of questions. We have slug removal. I know that deals with the sewer. I know I asked that question before, but is the sewer plant take care of that number? I just understand, if they have their own budget and they have their own money, why does that come out of our general fund? Why do we pay for it?
Sewer authorities paying for it comes out of the concentration account.
And then the other one on this one is Gilmore and Associates for $34,211. What does that entail? That it would be, that we would spend $34,000?
What month are you looking at?
This is Treasury report for the month, this is January 2018.
That's made up of approximately $2,127 reimbursable on escrow, $3,539 from the state grant, and $11,125 for the sewer monthly engineering fees. It's also made up of $2,346.99 of escrow, also $11,465 of reimbursable through escrow, and $770 for Wharf renovations, and $2,836.34 of general monthly engineering. So it's of the $34,000, $2,836 is just charged to the general fund.
There were four things on here for the, there was a judgment for Jose Lugo, there was a judgment for Sonia Derry, a judgment for Becky Hall. They're all for $21.75. What are, I don't even understand, what are they for?
These are people that didn't pay the borough for their properties on Chestnut Street. We had to file certain legal filings and that's what the costs of the filings were.
Oh, okay. And then the last one, CBN, they're one for $15,449. What would that be for?
I guess it's all the invoices for that month that were charged to CBN. I'd have to pull out the individual invoices.
Now, that seems like a high number that we would have in a month to go with CBN. Is there something that we're working on that we would need more materials or more...
I think he can see that it's almost completed and I think our guys have done a tremendous job.
Then you can, I'll get the breakdown off you. I'll ask for it tomorrow then in an email.
Anything else?
Treasury report. Yeah, the last question is the docks. How have the docks held up over the winter so far? Have we had any issues? I know that...
There's been a lot of issues. I don't know if you've been following it, there's...
No.
Well, you weren't here, so that's probably why you weren't up to date on it. The company that built the docks and the company that designed the docks want to replace the last two docks at their expense. We're not telling them yes or no because we want to make sure this isn't going to happen in the future. So right now that we retained the outside counsel, our insurance company's been put on notice and all the parties are, that are involved are put on notice. So right now, they want to replace these docks, but we're waiting to find out from our engineers and all if what they're going to replace it, if it's the same thing, is it going to hold up again? But there's no cost that's going to occur from the borough except if we have to get outside counsel.
That's it.
Frank?
First, I want to congratulate Karen Dobson and Lou Dobson for a great event on Saturday. I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, the chief might disagree, but when you have 500 people that are on a, more or less, an Irish bar crawl, it seemed to me as if it was a very well orchestrated and people just had a good time and seemed to be mostly incident-free. And, you know, I think Karen and Carl and Andrew Moore and a number of other people do a great job with that and it's just now becoming kind of a fun annual thing in the borough and it's a nice thing to see. Mr. Dillon, on the path, the bike path right near, the entryway right near the track, the old just spurline park trail sign. The sign itself is in really bad shape, number one. And then number two, on the back of the sign, it has now become kind of a graffiti destination. So I know first we've got the guys that can take care of the graffiti pretty quickly. If we could get on that, that'd be great. But also, I know there's kind of some gray area with who's in charge of those signs. Are they, are they ours now?
Yes.
Do we own those? Do we take care of those? Yeah, okay. So if we could take a look at the sign on the way into the path right near the track, that'd be great. Also, you know, you hear a lot of rumors. I know we've got a lot of really good informal relationships with people at the Redevelopment Authority. I'm wondering if we could just send a letter for an official update on what's going on with the property on Riverfront North. I know we've got, like I said, we've got a lot of conversations that go on, but people I think are hearing a lot of rumors. I don't know what to tell them about what's true and what's not true. I'm not saying we'll get a definitive on, on that answer, but if we could just maybe seek an official statement from the Redevelopment Authority on that or if we can give it right now if we've got more information than people currently.
See if they can get an official statement.
Yeah, okay. And then, chief, I know we've looked at this a number of times before, but Farragut Avenue, signage insofar as a stop sign. Can you just give me like your, your official thoughts on a stop sign somewhere between the island, you know, near Finney McGee's? You know what I'm talking about, where the Veterans Memorial? From there down to Wawa, except for the ones that are right there, in between that stop sign and down to Wawa.
I, my opinion is that stop signs are, you're using it for speed.
Well, I would like to know what your opinion is on that.
That's where, they're not used for that. That's why the stop signs are designed.
What about pedestrian, like, you know, midway through? I mean, there are a lot of pedestrians that head from the one side of the street to the Borough Pub side of the street.
To the Borough Pub.
Frankly. You know, and a lot of them are traveling later at night. You know, a lot of parking occurs all over Harriman and they head that way. It hasn't been an issue, I know, it's just, it's just one of those things that I worry sometimes about.
Maybe, again, we'd have to look at it and I don't know if we have to get our engineers involved, but looking for an actual formal crosswalk up there, is that what you're going to do?
Yeah, yeah. Just interested in if you've ever felt the need for something like that or...
Well, it's funny because we had this conversation when I first came here and hoping that would get a little more traction. Again, the whole problem with speed enforcement is our biggest challenge.
Right.
So actually, my, I had this conversation with Sergeant Faith, I was working with Mr. Walge, and we're going to put more what we call speed lines out so we can do that. However, if we can ever get the state of Pennsylvania on board.
No, I got you.
And let us run radar and people will know that's a high enforcement area. I think that's the best thing we could do. But other than that, I would say you'd have to look for maybe some signage reference to pedestrians.
Yeah, and I agree with you, speeding...
It's the same situation that, you know, Councilman Proci always talks about on Radcliffe.
Right.
And rightfully so. I mean, what we're now trying to do is we have the inbound people from the bridge coming up, trying to go up to Island View for business and we're trying to put some details out there. At the same time, we're trying to monitor schools. So it's just economy of resources that I talk about all the time, but I agree with you.
Yeah, and certainly I'd be lying if I said that I wouldn't think that, I would think it might help a little bit with the speeding, but that really isn't the only reason I ask. I mean, there really are a lot of people that cross that.
No, I mean, we could look at it and, you know, there's different things out there. I know Merle and I have talked, because we had the same issue where we were talking about Mill Street when it came down pedestrian crossing.
Right.
So...
Okay, I'll reach out to you and more, maybe talk more.
We're more glad to meet you up there.
Yeah, that's all I know, thank you.
Maran?
I just want to piggyback on his, people don't really stop at those stop signs that are near the memorial. And sometimes it's rough to get across. I mean, I don't think it's, it's so set, it's set up...
It's called the Bristol stop.
No, it's set up so wrong, I think. The stop sign has to be moved up further, I think. Something's not right, it's, it's bad, really is. I think we should look at that area.
Sure, we'll look at it, but I don't follow you by moving a stop sign, but that's going to do.
You know, I'd also like to meet with you there.
Sure.
Okay. I wanted to ask Merle something. Can you go to the podium? I want to know about the downed tree that's on Farragut Avenue and what's going on with restoring power to those two homes there. Do you know?
We had a large, very large tree limb that came down prior to the main event of the storm. It was enough wind that took it down. It has a large Verizon and Comcast cable in the center and it had two Pico electric connections to the double house that's on McKinley Street. The mayor actually was the one... The mayor actually was the one that alerted me to this. When the tree branches came down and it took the wire down almost waist-high on the sidewalk, they did not lose power. So, we didn't have actually an outage, but it pulled the service off of 190 McKinley and it laid on the back roof deck where you come out the back of the house.
Okay.
So, this became really an unsafe situation because Pico, we couldn't get them out right away and it didn't look like they were going to come out until the next day. So, I advised both of the residents in 188 and 190 that they should seek a place to go for the night, just in case another tree branch fell and pulled that wire down further where it got close to the gutter or the downspouts that could have energized and started a fire in the roof. So, the both residents agreed and they left for the evening. The next day, we got in touch with the owner of the rental property, which is 188, and asked him, after Pico came out, they determined that under normal circumstances, if the wire had been entwined with the tree, that they would have had Ashpunk come do it. But because the two services went clear of where the tree fell, then it became the owner's responsibility once the power is turned off.
Okay.
So, Pico come out the next day and they disconnected the service to two houses. The one where the owner of the tree rents, they were still able to leave that one on, but it took out the corner house, the street laid on the pole, and the one resident across the street at 200 McKinley. So, the owner was notified. He came out after being notified with a text from me to have the tree branches and all taken up. Because Pico wouldn't come back as long as they had that big mess there and it was all entwined with...
You know it's not totally removed yet. You realize that, right?
Yeah, but it's clear enough and the street's open that they can... Pico can come back and work on the line to get it back on again.
It is okay then?
Yeah.
So, your opinion is that the landlord did do what needs to be done for Pico to be able to do what they did?
The landlord did.
Okay.
There's no further cleanup that needs to be done?
Well, no. He's going to clean up the rest of it.
Okay.
And once Pico gets the power back on, he probably is going to take down the rest of the tree because that's, you know, looking at the part that came off. It's like, I don't know if it's diseased or what, but it came down fairly easily. So...
All right.
All the other Comcast and Verizon, they were notified and they've been out and they still have maybe one or two other services to hook up yet for that, but it's moving along.
Thank you, Merle, for everything.
They don't have power back yet at those two locations.
I know, that's why I'm... Because I know...
Yeah, and I've been on the phone. I've been on the phone back and forth all day with Pico at the dispatch center and also at their emergency line to try to get, you know, them to get somebody out there.
Are they going to come out tomorrow or what is the...
They gave the owner at 190 a text today and said they would be out Thursday.
Oh, my God.
But we're trying to get them every day. I'm calling every chance I get. So, and we also talked to Ted Duran, our rep, and he's trying to work one or two from his end.
I've been working... I want to thank Merle since Saturday about 4:00 a.m. We've been working together and trying to get these people back up and get the tree cut. But also too, I meant to mention this on my report, you know, Grundy Towers was out working along with Merle and Mr. Dillon, trying to get power back into there. I mean, I guess we spent, what, about 12 hours before we finally got somebody really moving on it. It's frustrating when you see 500,000 people in Bucks County lost their power.
I said it was a third of the actual customers.
Yeah. We got everybody back except these two houses. Unfortunately, or fortunately for them, it happens to be across the street from me. But, you know, we've had a lot of conversation and working with the police and the fire and the emergency management to get it cleared up.
I just wanted an update because the person that lives there is pretty upset.
Well, the other person...
She has a small baby and she, you know, wants to get back into her home because everything's there for the child, you know? That makes it difficult.
The other person has... They have four people and they've just had to throw all their food away.
Yeah, I mean, that's terrible.
It's not good. And then we've got another storm coming.
I know. I have one more thing. I'm finished. Thank you. Thank you, Merle. I have one more thing. I would like to honor St. Mark's CYO JV team for winning the Region 19 All-Stars, not All-Stars, the Region 19. And they won every game... Well, they lost one game during the season, but they won. And then they went to the final against St. Ephraim and they lost and it was to a person that lived in Bristol prior and his son was on the team. So, it really stayed in Bristol anyway, the way I look at it. Our kids did a great job and I would like to honor them here. It doesn't have to be this month because it's, you know...
Never get it done for this month. But work with Brittany to get certificates and set it up for you.
I will. For next month?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. That's it.
Billy, you got anything? Jim?
No.
So, what's on your work session agenda? Items one through six should be on the agenda for next Monday. That's it. I don't know if I have any questions or if I get anything on them agenda items? On the agenda items?
Some things that I need done.
All right, just a couple of things I want to run through real quick. Again, Merle, thanks for all your help with the storm. I know they said it was the worst storm in Pico history that they had to deal with this many outages. It was worse than any storm they ever had. And I know that without your help, a lot of us would not still have power. You want to be dealing... I want to talk about spring, but we're dealing with six to 18 inches of snow on Wednesday. Hopefully, we don't get it, but, you know, spring's right around a corner, so I just want to make sure that the manager and the borough crew starts getting things ready for, you know, the kids will all be out walking the path, the baseball fields, the street sweeper will be starting. So, I want to get ready for spring. Hopefully, in a few weeks, we get out of this cold weather. I brought up several times about the stop sign that blinks near Cantina. It really catches your eye from down the street and we talked about two of them at the ball fields prior. And I know PennDOT doesn't allow these. PennDOT put them up. We had nothing to do with it. But I think it's a good idea to really look into it again and maybe put them up. And if PennDOT wants to take them down, we take them down. But I think that'll get your attention when you're coming down Jefferson Avenue. Stop at them two stop signs, especially where the ball fields are. So, I'd really like to see we get something done with that right away. People will know that May, we usually do paint-up fix-up month where people can come in and do some things on the exterior of their home at no cost of their permit fee. So, hopefully, you're planning to do some stuff around the house this year that we can help you save money on the permit. That's a good way to try to really clean the town up for spring and the summer to showcase our town. So, with that, if nobody has any other...
I do. I have some things that I haven't got a chance. They're quick. First of all, I'd like to say happy birthday to Mr. Dillon, who just celebrated his 74th birthday on behalf of most of us here. We'd like to wish you many, many, many more. And then I'd like to say thank you also to Merle and Mr. Dillon for always keeping us informed of what's going on, especially when we had bad weather like the other day. I love every time I get an email from Merle and Mr. Dillon and they'll let me know what's going on. Like that, when people call us, we know how to respond without having to ask them first. I also would like to thank the borough staff for helping out with the wharf. It's... If you have a chance, go down there and see what's being done. I'm sure that's going to save us a lot of money by it being done in-house and I'm sure when it's done, it's going to be beautiful. So, keep up the good work, guys. We couldn't ask for anything better. Mr. Dillon, and I know that sometimes we put hangers on the doors when we want to send notices out, but I'd like to suggest that when the houses are kind of vacant and we don't even know when the people are coming out to work on them, if we could just mail them the hanger, because one of the hangers that was put on a door this weekend because of the storm is in my yard now. So, I'd like to see that done that way. And there's a few houses that needed some attention this weekend. They were supposed to do some cleanup and instead everything's on the porch. So, I'll give you that address later. And thank you, Mr. Dillon, for everything you do for this borough. We really do appreciate you.
Merle, you're going to be in, I guess, in the borough, you and Herbie and the chief will be in contact if this storm really gets out of hand. So, if we have to post something, I mean, if you have power and there's any kind of emergency, things that we need to post, just go to our channel and they'll be able to communicate with residents at home. But I know 16 inches is a lot of snow. So...
Wet and heavy.
Wet and heavy snow.
I don't even want to think of worse.
We'll do our best to, you know, keep our guys out. We have nine trucks that can run with plows and three salt spreaders. The guys do a great job and...
Always do.
We'll do what we have to do to open our streets up as soon as possible. Okay, so we're all done with everything. So, I want to open up public participation that if anybody wants to speak on anything regarding fields, regarding the letter that Mr. Gerard and Mr. Ricchio sent to Borough, to the Borough, I'm going to have the manager eventually give everybody a copy of this letter so you have it for your, including the press. So, I'm going to open up public participation on this side of the room. So, if anybody wants to speak, go to the podium, state your name and address.
Stacy Dragin to 9 New Brook Street.
Thomas Carpenter, 1712 Benson Police.
We're here today because, you know, the job description that you're trying to cut down in salary or take a person out of is more than most people realize. I have a list of about 15 items that if you had to post this, would be something that this person does. They order the backfill, they order the chalk, the field dryer, diamond dust, call for dumpster service, they clean our bathrooms, remove our trash, hang our tarps and remove them, they apply the backfill dirt, level out the fields, hang our sponsor signs, grate prep, rake our fields, they line them, they clean out our dugouts, arrive at a different time when the product deliveries are coming, put all that product away, the skid's full of diamond dust, they come on a truck, it's like $700 to have it delivered. So, now you can imagine the size of this product that's coming. When the field is graded, the dugouts or the base holes get filled in, they've got to be taken out, bases, mounds, plates need to be aligned. And then on top of it, the fact that when it rains, they're for hours getting these fields ready so that these kids can play and we don't have to cancel games. So, with all of that in mind, I thought to myself, okay, how many days are we talking? So, Leo has already been out for three practices. Now, we're in March.
In February.
Okay, so he came out in February, but I started it in March and he goes through October. All right, so we're looking at 212 days. Now, you have him at a $12,000 salary, taxes is about $27.60, another $2,000 to be insured to work through the borough. So, we're looking at $7,240. Now, you take 212 days, four hours a day, 848 hours. You break that down, not even including his equipment repairs, and you're at $8.54 an So, I just want to put this out there. Tommy has more technical things that he wants to go over.
I don't think... She hit it out... Listen, the scope of the job, you guys have no realization what goes into it and how many hours and what he does. For us, the first thing I would like you to say is I hope you guys do not accept his resignation. I think it was done out and there's a lot of stuff going on. I think he's emotional right now and I think he's tired of having his name dragged through the mud. If you accept that resignation, you are torpedoing our baseball season this year. There's no way you are going to find somebody now, this time, with one month... Opening day is April 8th. Our first tournament's March 25th, a preseason tournament. If you do that, the 200-plus kids that signed up, whose families are also taxpayers, that don't mind paying to have impeccable fields, you just torpedoed their season and that'd be a shame. This guy, listen, you don't understand. There's a... This is a trade. You're not going to get some 70-year-old man to go out there and do these fields. There's equipment. You have to have a quad. These fields are not done manually. They are done with a quad and three different apparatuses that attach to the back of the quad that if not run properly, you could destroy the field. He's a magician with rain and saving us from canceling dates that are almost impossible to reschedule. I am the travel representative. I'm not on the board with Stacy, but I work hand-in-hand with her. My games are Fridays and Sundays, so we don't interfere with Little League because all our kids... It's a requirement for travel to play Little League. We want to keep Little League in place so the kids are playing in town with their friends. But the kids that want to come try out and go for a little more competition, we offer that also. So, that's seven days a week he has to be there, Fridays and Sundays for us. He... Last year was, you know, we get some rainy times. There's times where, in the travel part of it, if we cancel a game and we can't reschedule it, we eat that loss. That's a rule for travel. And it could affect us. We made the playoffs this year. We made it to the Final Four. I'm proud of our kids. We have a great group of young boys. And kids and parents have put in a lot of time and money. So, I just think... My thing is that it's so short-sighted on your part, just to break it down to dollars and cents.
You also pointed out with the distances, the backdrops.
There's so much knowledge that has to go into doing these fields. Each age group's lined differently. The coach's box is going different places for each age group. So, where are you guys going to find somebody to do that with that knowledge? Or are you going to train them? It's just, it's an art. It's a skill. It's something he's acquired over long periods of time. He works... I mean, he works hard. Listen, it's... I don't know. It's just unflustered because I could see our season really going down the drain if these guys follow through with this.
Just so you know, I mean, we already voted to give Mr. Polanski the contract. That was last...
I know that.
What transpired since that meeting was Mr. Gerard and Mr. Ricchio elected to hire Luke Hornstein to come after Borough Council for doing, for us, awarding Leo the contract. So, that's basically what, you know, we're discussing and I appreciate what you're saying because I don't think Mr. Gerard or Mr. Ricchio have any...
Well, I've never seen Mr. Gerard, Mr. Ricchio, or Mr. Hornstein at the baseball field. So, for them to do this, they have no idea.
Mr. Ricchio was there the last opening day.
Oh, he came for opening day, but he's not there for the daily functions. He don't put in the time that we do. So, for them to go after... I mean, I'm not taking it personally, but to go after our league. Listen, he might be the most important part of our league. You guys don't realize. We can't play without proper playing fields.
We literally talk to that man every single day.
He is on call. On call.
I mean, there's a couple of issues. The first issue is that you guys aren't understanding. It's not that anybody has anything against what Leo is getting paid or his job description or whatever. There are certain things that are borough code or whatever. You can't, you know, from the letter that I read, you can't give somebody a job for four years because then it goes into the next majority's group. You can't bind somebody with somebody else's contract, right? So, you can't do that for four years. So, that's the first... So, there's... It's not that the idea, you just have to follow the right protocol. There's certain ways of doing it. So, and the other thing is this, with a certain amount of money, it goes out to bid. That's it. And here's the thing about it.
I thought it had to be over $19,000 to go out to bid. You have a recurring maintenance contract.
Let him...
Right, but, okay.
I'd rather them state what they have to state and I'll listen to what you have to say.
Listen, can I say something? I don't care about none of that, Tom. I don't know the codes. Alls I know is this. The only one... No, the only one that Tom will lose out is the kids. Right now, the only one that are going to lose out is the kids.
Tom, we've had this discussion. Me and you had this discussion earlier and we talked about it. And I understand what you're saying. The problem is this, you can't just do it because it works for you. You know what I mean? It's good for you.
It doesn't work for me. It doesn't work for me. It works for the kids. It works for the league.
Okay, but listen, you're saying it can't just work for you. But as a council, you've already voted to keep him there.
But that's what I'm saying. So why would he resign? He's still, he's still under contract.
Because his name is being drug through the mud. The man is going through a lot.
By who?
Let's tell now, the newspapers, Facebook, you take, you take it out there.
About what? About this?
And then in general, this is what's happening.
Let's talk about different things. Like, it's our job, right, as council, is to make sure that we're doing the best thing with all the taxpayers, their money involved.
Right.
Now, in this particular case, I understand. You're heavy into baseball right now and that's where your focus is. And I get it.
No, I'm heavy into the kids, Tony.
Tom.
I'm heavy
Right now because your kids play baseball.
Right.
That's why, yeah, well, that's why. And I get it. But that's the reason. So, but it's our job up here as a council is to make sure that we are taking care of the money for taxpayers.
I know, but the 200 families that signed up that are taxpayers, they don't have
Well, that leads into the next question. Here's the next
They're not entitled to any of that money?
So we have, no, but I'm saying, so it leads into the next part. So other communities, right? I know they have, how much money does Little League bring in every season? How much money does Little League
I don't think this, we're getting off
Bring in? I addressed that the last time I stood here.
Let me get, hold it.
Wait, wait.
Everybody hold it one minute. You guys have anything else? Because this is going to go back and forth and it's not
That's the way it should be, isn't it?
I just would like to plead to all of you to keep him in this position. He is important to us. And think about that when you're placing your votes as to what direction you're going to go.
I have no vote. Listen, I will second that. Hold on. I don't, I understand Tony's point about the four-year thing. And listen, I'm just asking you guys to find some compromise for this season. Because, listen, if you guys blow this up right now, we're done.
Tom, we, he's there.
All right.
He's, he's got hired.
I'm sorry.
You talked to Leo. That's all you told Leo to come out. That's what he said.
I was just in Texas with him.
All right. Anything else?
No, that's it. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Anybody else on this side?
Did I finish what we were
No.
Nobody else.
I will give you all the time you need.
It's not all the time.
It's public participation. I will bring
And they're going back and forth.
Anybody else on this side of the room? Anybody on this side of the room want to speak
Steve Cullen, 1324 Wilson Avenue. I was president, I mean, Stacy came up here and talked a little bit. I mean, I was president of the league a few years and I was on the board. I've sat on it for like 20 years, maybe more. I mean, I can't say enough about the fields that they didn't say tonight. But now I'm on the, I'm on the district board out of town. And just, just the district people outside of our community, you know, they just, they just, they praise our fields. They just can't believe how well-maintained they are, you know, when they come here for tournaments or whatever. And, you know, and that's another testament to the job that Leo's done. And, you know, I do have to say this, as long as I, the time I was the president of the board, I don't think I had to call Leo one time. I mean, he was always there. I mean, not one time. I don't remember even picking my phone up and saying, Leo, the field's not done or it's not mined or whatever. I mean, he just did a fantastic job and I'd just like to leave it out there. You know, I think he does, he does a great job and I would, you know, hope, you know, everybody, I mean, I hope he doesn't resign and stays and does the job. That's all I have to say about it. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything they want to comment on this side? That ends public participation. All right, Mr. Devine, what do you want to finish saying?
So the first question I have is other, other communities, they have Little League, right? So Little League is a nonprofit organization. How much money does Bristol Little League bring in? How much money does it bring in?
And again, in the last meeting I was here, I stated
Do you know what the number is?
I'm going to ask you today.
All right, ballpark. Is it 10,000?
It varies on a year-to-year basis.
All right, this year, give me the number.
I don't have one this year. I'm at a meeting. Give me a number.
All right, well, well, let me get to the point. Let's just say whatever the number is. Say it's 40,000, right? You have money that, what is being paid out by Little League? What's paid out by Little League? What do you pay out?
Charters, insurance, uniforms, umpires, electric
Where am I getting it to bill, Stacy? You got to go back to the podium.
Tony, honestly, I mean, usually you like to break even. I mean, what you pick in and what you pay out.
Stacy, do you want to do this or not? You don't have
They're not going to
It's your call.
They're not going to account with the money, dollars in an account or anything. Usually you break even.
The phone's not anyway.
I don't think anything to do with the fields, but
It does. It actually does. Because there has to be
We'll give you if we're good, Stacy.
A lot of other leagues have over 500, 600 children. They have volunteers to the tune of 50, 60 people. We have six on our board, Tom Carpenter, Dan Snyder. They're our volunteers. I put out for things, I get one or two responses. So we don't have the manpower to maintain the fields like the other leagues do. We are blessed to have the borough do that for us. We do pay electric for what goes on over there. We have done repairs, minimal things that need to be done on the buildings. We have a charter that we have to pay every year per team, per year. We have to pay the insurance to have the children out there and the umpires to be out there. We have an umpire service that we have to pay and then the physical umpires. All the machines within the concession stand, we have to either make sure they're properly updated or replace them.
Am I missing anything?
The diamond dust that dries the fields.
Equipment.
Uniforms, equipment. I think last year alone, our equipment bill with uniforms was somewhere to the tune of 12,000 or 13,000 for baseballs, catcher's gears, things like that.
So at the end of the year, is there any money left in the account?
There is maybe a couple hundred. Well, you know what? No, I lie. That's incorrect because we had enough money to put up our initial portion of our charter at 2,500 this year. So we were able to pay our charter prior to signups, which we haven't been able to do. I think we've done it the last three years, but prior to that, we weren't able to. We had to wait for signups to bring cash in to pay our charter.
Okay, so if that's not feasible, if there's not money there to put towards, you know, paying down whatever we do or meet halfway, it goes back to the same thing. The same thing is this. To me, this is an issue that Mr. Salerno should have dealt with. This is not an issue of council, right? If it was okay, and you're saying that $12,000 is a fair number to break down to $8.50 an hour, and it, listen, I watch, I'm not, I'm not at the baseball fields every day. I'm not watching. But when I do go by, I drive by there every day because that's where I live. We have our borough workers, I see more than one or two occasions, they are cleaning, picking up the dirt. So that's on that list. I see our borough workers doing it. I see our borough workers on the, on the quad raking the fields and it's not Leo. That happens.
That's not true.
I watched it, Tommy. It's not true.
You may see
Are you coming out and watch it? Is that what you're saying? You calling me a liar? Is that what you, are you calling me a liar?
Okay, okay, hold on. You may see, you may have seen borough worker on a lawnmower. They do pick up leaves, they do cut grass.
Exactly. But what I'm saying is, and they cut the grass.
Stacy, we're done.
There we go.
We're off base. It has nothing to do
It's not off base. These are, these are
Stacy, we want to talk to him after the meeting. That's fine.
Absolutely.
That's it.
Thank you.
All right, you're done.
Thank you.
You're dead, Dave.
All right, Dave, since you started this whole problem.
Yeah, listen, I don't make the rules. I follow the rules. State law says that anything over $10,000 has to be put out to bid. No one asked Mr. Polinsky to resign, okay? All I asked Mr. Polinsky to is put a bid in. That's as simple as that. That was his decision to resign. State law requires, and that might be a different interpretation, my interpretation of that is anything over $10,000 has to go out to bid.
Wrong.
Okay, it's as simple as that.
Wrong.
Well, I, I, I've got the, what happened was, Mr. Ricchio called up the Borough Association. The Borough Association gave him that $10,000 plus the two years. Now, the two-year thing is, this present council can't burden the next possible council in two years. So that's the two-year rule. And the other thing was the $10,000. And if you'd like to read it, it's, the amendment is 1402, okay? Now, the one, the one amendment is all contractors of purchases or purchases in excess of the base amount of 18.5, as Mr. Carpenter was talking about. Well, I feel that the base amount of this contract was not, is $48,000 because it's a four-year contract. Also, on 1402, written or telephoned price quotations from at least three qualified and responsible contractor must be requested for contracts in excess of $10,000. Okay? And then, there's one other one here. It's a, it's a case, it's called Libido versus North Pocono School District. It cannot, it cannot enter into a contract which will extend beyond the term of which the, the members of the body were elected. So it can only be awarded for two years. Okay? And also, it says here that any council member who votes to unlawfully evade provisions of this contract over $10,000 commits a misdemeanor of the third degree for each contract entered in a direct result of this vote. Okay? It's against state law. It's, I don't make the rules. I follow the rules, okay?
So who
And that's my interpretation of it. And I put my money where my mouth is. Okay, so
So who wrote that? That, Mr. Hornstein?
Mr. Hornstein, no. Well, no. That's, that's case law.
This letter you're reading is from Hornstein?
Yes.
Okay. Now, let me tell you how I feel about this. Because it's really been bothering me since I received a registered letter from Lou Hornstein, who's been, you know, the savior of Bristol Borough. You never went to Lou Hornstein when he charged a school $50,000 to write a one-page letter. You didn't care about the rules then, right, Dave?
Listen.
That he charged $50,000. Did he charge you $50,000 to write three pages? What did he charge you to write this letter?
How much did Tannery charge you?
That's personal. I paid for that.
That's personal.
Not, did you pay for it?
That's personal.
All right, let me tell you what I think about what you did. I think this is the biggest disgrace, and I've been sitting here 17 years.
Biggest disgrace to break the law.
Let me finish. Let me finish.
Why don't we go to court then?
I listened to you. Let me finish.
Why don't we go to court then?
Let me finish, okay? We had a work session and we discussed giving Leo the contract. Am I right? Did we have a work session last month?
Yeah.
And we discussed putting on the agenda for Leo to get the contract. Am I right?
And listen, I voted against it.
I'm asking you a question.
No, not at the work session.
Did you bring anything up at the work session? No. Did Tony Ricchio bring anything up at the work session? No. We put it on the agenda and then at the, at the regular council meeting when we voted, Mr. Ricchio said, I called the Association of Burrows to find out if this was right or wrong.
Exactly. And I, and I agreed with him after he called.
But you didn't say anything.
Well, I didn't know.
And I asked our solicitor, who's sitting here, was this legal or was it illegal for us to vote on it?
He said it was legal.
The solicitor said it was legal. At any time, did you ask our solicitor a question? Either at the work session or the regular meeting if this vote was legal or not? I'm asking you a question.
After the vote was taken, I, I did
You did what?
I, I didn't like the vote, so I
Why don't you sit here, why didn't you sit here as a councilman and ask our solicitor?
Listen, I had my arguments. I had my arguments four years ago. Same argument, okay?
But Dave, you're not answering the question. The question is, we pay, we pay a solicitor. If you had a question regarding this contract, why didn't you say to the solicitor, Mr. Salerno, is this legal or illegal?
Can I answer that for him? Can I answer that for him? I didn't know whether it was legal or not.
But did you even ask?
Let me answer for him. I'll tell you why. The reason why he didn't is because the same reason four years ago, we brought it up and it was handled and he, and our solicitor says, it doesn't matter what you guys do to vote, it'll be me. I'm giving you my opinion.
No, that's not true.
It's, it is. What do you mean? The same one that Greg listed.
Your name, listen.
And it's the same one that he gave. I'm just telling you why.
Your name is not on the letter. Am I correct?
What does that have to do with it?
Mr. Gerard wrote this letter. I'm dealing with it.
The situation as a council, we're talking about as a council.
Here's what I think, Dave.
Am I done talking? Because are you?
Yeah.
Okay. The biggest disgrace in the world because I asked somebody to give a bid. Are you kidding me? Are you kidding me?
No, I'm not.
I gotta give a bid once a week for the last 40 years. Give a bid. Are you kidding me? Give a bid. Hey, nobody's saying, don't do the job.
You know, I feel, Dave.
If his bid is $12,000 and he's a little man, he gets the job.
Did you ever get a bid when you weren't the lowest bidder?
Did I?
Did you ever get a job when you weren't the lowest bidder?
Sure.
Why?
Because the people wanted it.
Tell me why.
Because the people wanted it.
Why though? Why did they want?
It wasn't taxpayers' money.
Why did they want you, Dave? Because you were dependable? Because you did a good job? Does any of that come into play?
It's not taxpayers' money.
Or do you just kick somebody when they're on the ground and that's what you're doing?
It's okay to attack Dave. It's okay to attack Dave. It's okay to
I just want to say
You call that the biggest disgrace, right? You sued another councilman and you dropped it. That's a disgrace, but that's a
I'll give you all the time you need with this issue.
It's the biggest disgrace. Hey, you gotta give a bid.
Hey, I'm embarrassed.
State law says you gotta give a bid. Okay, give a bid.
Listen to me. Since you know so much and your attorney knows so much, we're going to clear this up tonight. But I'm really, I'm embarrassed that you didn't deal with this.
I'm embarrassed that I asked the guy to give a bid. Are you kidding me?
No, no, that you went and hired an attorney to come after this council. You drew a line in the sand. You want to charge this council, these five people, for voting for something that we feel is 100% right?
It's right. Don't worry about it. It's okay.
Tony, I'm not talking to you.
Listen.
Listen, I'm going to call a recess and we're going to straighten this out. So either you keep your mouth shut or I'm calling a recess and you're being removed.
So what?
Now, how do you like that?
I love it.
Okay, you want to be removed?
What?
I got a recess.
Yes.
All right.
Okay, I'd like to reconvene this meeting and hopefully we can control some this meeting. So just to get back to where we were, dealing with this whole thing, I just feel that we had a work session, we had a regular meeting. Mr. Gerard and Mr. Ricchio had every opportunity, instead of calling the Association of Burrows, to discuss this with this council, the borough manager and the borough solicitor. And that would have been the best way to handle, instead of trying to hire an attorney to come after this council. Okay, so Dave, you have something you want to say before we go?
I was unaware of this information. I'm sure Mr. Ricchio was unaware at the work session, okay?
Yous were here.
And then the following week, we had a vote on it and then we really got into it because we felt that it just wasn't right. That's all. We, no undermining there.
And I
But we lost the vote and we feel strong enough about this that, okay, well, listen, you have your opinion, I have my opinion. And if, if we're like this, that's the way the democratic system works, okay? I disagree with you, you disagree with me. We go and the judge out of court says, well, you're right or you're wrong. I mean, it's the same way with Waste Management. Waste Management thought they were right, Mascaris thought they were right. The judge decided who was right.
And who was right?
Well, the judge decided that Mascaris was right. Okay, that's all.
All I'm saying is, I don't
Now, listen, I didn't have any emotions about Leo. So let's get that out.
I don't think, it's not about Leo. It's about this council doing the right thing. And you're questioning that we didn't do the right thing. And that's what's the problem I have. And not only that, you have an attorney send this council a letter threatening that they're going to file charges against them and they're going to do this. And the whole thing's ridiculous. So I'm going to let the solicitor explain one more time why this council was right on what we're doing.
Thank you, President. So I've been solicitor for 10 years. I think in 10 years, I've offered some really good advice to council. My job is to protect council and the borough. And I don't take any of the opinions lightly. And my concern here is how this worked or didn't work. I've worked with all the council people and I would think if the council person had a concern about the legality of what we were doing, they could just have easily asked me. And if Mr. Gerard or Mr. Ricchio asked me why I think this was legal, at that point, I would have pointed out to them the exception, okay? Their attorney in their letter doesn't even mention that there are exceptions to these rules, these bidding rules. We've been awarding this contract for years and never been questioned about that these need to go out to bid. It's been my opinion and continues to be my opinion that this contract falls under the maintenance exception, under the code, okay? Now, either your attorney didn't read far enough in the code or he ignored it. But there are a number of exceptions and this falls under at least one. And after what I heard tonight, it might even fall under a professional service one. But it definitely falls under the exception. That's my opinion. And if you had called me, I would explain that to you. But instead, you went to an attorney who turns around and threatens your other council members with fines and misdemeanors. And I find that offensive because that's not the way this council has worked. We tried to work with everybody, all right? And this, again, as Ralph said, this wasn't brought up in a work session. It wasn't brought up. We got sabotaged. We got sabotaged, okay? We got ambushed. On the night of the vote, Mr. Ricchio says he called the Borough Association. Number one, to this date, I don't know what he told the Borough Association, I don't know what they told him back, okay? I can guarantee you, what they did say to him is, "Check with your solicitor," okay? And you didn't do that, okay? This is not the way to try to cooperate with other councilmen, all right? So, my opinion is that it falls under the maintenance exception. And number two, this other rule that you think is so clear about the four years, okay, doesn't apply to proprietary contracts. And this is a proprietary contract. Again, if your attorney had looked into it further, he would have realized that this section doesn't apply. So, not only you're wrong in both cases, but you've caused all this disruption, and you've cost the taxpayers more money, because Ralph's gonna tell you what the council had with the Borough had to do.
All right, can I respond?
Right.
Mr. President? First of all, again, you keep saying your opinion. Oh, I have opinions, okay?
But you're not a lawyer.
We happen to disagree. And, right, and four years ago, I disagreed, and what happened? We had a vote, and Mr. Polinsky worked, and again, we had a vote, okay? I disagreed with, but, and off he went. So, why he resigned, I don't know, but it's certainly like, I'm still the opinion, we need to, he put a bid in, you know what I mean?
But you never, you and Mr. Ricchio never asked me to explain it. I would have given it to you, I would have told you why there was an exception. You didn't give me that opportunity.
I disagree with you, sir. I disagree with you. I disagree with your opinion.
You don't think it falls under the exception?
No.
What would you know about that?
I don't know anything about it.
Exactly.
All right, Mr. Cotroci.
This is not a classroom.
All right, Mr. Cotroci, you have the floor.
In between the work session and when we voted on it, all of a sudden that day, you have all this information that I wasn't aware of, that somebody fed you from the school district, and you made it sound like, oh, he only gets, he only charges them two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month, and we're paying twelve thousand dollars. So, I'm wondering, where the hell does that information come from?
I made a few phone calls.
I think somebody offered you that information.
Well, you're mistaken, sir.
Well, okay, maybe I'm mistaken, but that, and then you said, "Let's put it out to bid." First of all, you don't just say, "We're gonna put something out to bid." What do we put out to bid? Today, Mr. Carpenter and Mrs. Dragon explained just some of the things Leo does. I don't know how you would condense that into a bid packet, but I bet you it would cost us twenty-five hundred hours to prepare a bid packet to put it out to bid. So, you know, you don't just do something. If you were that concerned about it four years ago, then I think you should have been really concerned about it even before the work session happened. But definitely at that work session, if you had that kind of concern, you should have told us, you should have warned us, and I shouldn't have got a letter threatening that I'm gonna be charged with a misdemeanor or something else. And I really don't care what the guy says, and, you know, he's just trying to intimidate us, and I'm not buying it. But this thing, you had a lot of other information that you gathered in one week that you didn't share with us, so I'm a little disappointed. I got sandbags on that one, as did everybody else. And we tried to work together, and this is what you get.
Tony.
Mr. Cotroci, I have, why do you...
Tony, address me.
Ralph, could you ask Mr. Cotroci why he feels that it's okay and the misrepresentation that Mr. Gerard did from, why was he okay with you doing it to me when you turned around and sued me? Can you ask him that?
Do you have anything else?
I, you know, I just, I'm not interested. I just want to say, like, you know, Dave has said over and over again, "You think it should go out to bid," and all of a sudden, I'm the bad guy. That is not my issue at all. Reasonable, what you were saying three weeks ago, whenever it was, was not unreasonable. I disagreed with you. It was not unreasonable. It was a legitimate stance for someone to take that five other council members disagreed with. In that situation, when you've got a cordial relationship with people on council that we disagree a lot, yes. After the meeting, Tony Ricchio showed me the email, and I said, "Tony, listen," during the meeting, I asked Mr. Salerno, because you had approached me about the idea of whether or not it should go out to bid. Doing my due diligence, I actually asked the solicitor whether or not this was legal. He said yes. Mr. Ricchio brought the email to me after the meeting. I said, "Listen, I got some really good advice years ago from a lot of council people that have been here a long time before, where you get yourself into trouble is when you disregard the advice of your solicitor."
Thank you.
So, that is what I proceed. I voted for the solicitor, right? Now, if you, I honestly don't remember. If you didn't, and, you know, you want to pepper him on that regard, then that's your prerogative. But I voted for the solicitor because I trust his opinion, and that's why he's here. And I asked those questions, and I got the answer that said, "It is a legal matter." I've heard from Little League a number of times that the type of work that Leo does, he might even be underpaid at twelve thousand dollars. So, I did my due diligence after you approached me, and I appreciated you saying, "Listen, this is what I think, and I disagree." I appreciated Tony Ricchio saying, "Here's what I have, and I disagree." What I just did not appreciate is being told that I'm gonna be accused of a misdemeanor for following the advice of my solicitor. I don't understand. I frankly do not understand how it got to this point, because, you know, I just don't understand that...
I just think it takes a lot of nerve to have a lawyer send this council a letter when you want to try to work, or you want to try to move this town in a right direction, and you want to do what's right, and then you want to turn around, you want to come after these five councilmen for what they voted? That's an embarrassment.
That's shady.
All right, we're gonna end this soon. Mr. Devine, what else do you have?
It just makes me laugh that we continue to be hypocrites, right? We talk about it's an embarrassment, I can't believe that we gotta get an attorney involved, we gotta do this. You tried, you tried to get an attorney and sick an attorney and a lawsuit on Ms. Kelly Cochran for something that she wrote on Facebook, and this board supported it. That's what I'm saying, so don't be a hypocrite. That's all.
Okay, you done?
You don't believe that either.
All right, before we...
No, I really do, right? I mean, that was being the...
All right, guys, listen.
So, you think I tried to get the lawyer...
Since I know that none of you guys have...
But you know that's true.
Since I know that none of you guys have your law degree, and I'm sure a couple of you guys don't agree with our solicitor, because you feel that he's gonna say, like you said, Tony, he's gonna do whatever he's supposed to do or to make us look good. So, I thought, about a year ago, this council voted on bringing in special counsel.
Yep.
So, we have somebody here tonight who's probably one of the top attorneys in the state of Pennsylvania, that I'm gonna bring to the podium and discuss this, and then maybe you guys will understand what's going on. Mr. Gerber, can you please go to the podium, please?
Thank you for the kind introduction, I appreciate that. Members of council, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Salerno, Mr. Dillon, my name is Christopher Gerber. I served as special counsel for the Borough for some time. I've been requested to conduct an independent review of the decision of council to contract with Mr. Polinsky. And I can tell you without any equivocation that the decision is legal. I concur with your solicitor, through my work for a number of years, that the exception in this case to bidding does apply. This is the maintenance of public works. These fields, after considering what they are and reviewing the case law that interprets the statute, qualifies as public works. Maintenance of public works is not required to be bid, plain and simple. It's very straightforward. I certainly am not going to engage in the political thicket that's going on tonight, but I can tell you as a lawyer, as special counsel to this Borough, this is absolutely a legal decision. With respect to the term of the agreement, your solicitor is absolutely right. This is a proprietary decision of council. This is not a governmental function that you can't bind other boards. Governmental functions are something that the, your municipality is required by statute to do. You can't bind other boards. This is more of a business-related proprietary function that, under the Borough Code, can bind other boards. And this is only a four-year contract, not like a hundred-year contract.